Good morning, and welcome to the Kinnamahal meeting on March 9, 2021 for the District of Swamish. My name is Doug Race. I'm a councillor and acting mayor this month, and I will be chairing the meeting. I can swan first collect next class for home with the way may welcome to the traditional territory of the Swamish Nation. First like a motion to adopt the agenda, and I propose one addition, the addition of item five, which is an arts council request, and that would result in changing the present number five to number six, and the present number six to number seven. I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, councillor Herbert, second by councillor French. Any opposed to that motion? Motion passes. Thank you. For ministerial order one M192, pursuant to ministerial order M192, the District of Swamish is excluding in-person public attendance at this March 9, 2021 meeting, on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time, and the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability of this meeting by the following means: This meeting is being livestreamed. A video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on non-demand basis. I have something to move that motion, please. Move by councillor French, second by councillor Stoner. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is staff reports. Item 141, Oceanfront Amendments. Ms Fletcher, are you around?
I am. Good morning.
Morning. So before you start, council, this is considering recent discussions. This is going to be a bit of an experiment, this meeting. And I've spoken to Ms Fletcher about how we might conduct it. So we're going to, our object today is, or our goal today is to provide feedback to staff on some proposals to the oceanfront plan, to try to articulate that successfully. What we're going to try to do this time, instead of going back to the end of the meeting and trying to recover everything that we said during the meeting, as the meeting goes on, as the discussion goes on, we're going to stop and deal with any concerns or feedback and try and deal with that issue, and then move on to the next one. So we're going to start with the, with the presentation. After the presentation, if you look at your agenda, and number one objective, and there are five bullet points there, the designation of public roads, reallocation of gross floor areas, possible use of parking reductions, height bonuses, and public on-street parking. We are going to deal with those in that order when the discussion starts, and try and focus our comments around those, and then vote on any, have a straw vote on any possible concerns or feedback that council might want to make as we go through those, and, and then at the end, resolution. And before each one of those comes up for discussion, Ms Fletcher will give a brief summary of the issues for that particular bullet point. So try to organize your thoughts and your questions and comments along those lines. And so with that, Ms Fletcher, take it away.
Thank you. And can we see the screen? Awesome. Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Mayor, and Council. My name is Jessie Fletcher. I'm a planner here at the District of Swamish. And this morning, I'm here to introduce an application to make a series of changes to the Oceanfront Phase Development Agreement, zoning and subarea plan. This application is the result of the proposed expansion of district-owned roads through the oceanfront, specifically through blocks A, B, C, and E. This will result in a smaller parcel size for the developer and loss development potential. The intention of these updates is to adjust the zoning to reflect that loss, secure the new infrastructure designs in the phase development agreement, and secure some past changes that have not yet been adopted. So staff is here today to ask council for feedback on the designation of public roads, the reallocation of gross floor area between parcels, the possible use of off-street parking reductions to reflect public on-street parking, a height bonus for mass timber and public on-street parking in the village area. And I'll show the slide again at the end of the presentation. Today's presentation will cover the following outline. I'll be providing a high-level overview of each of the elements and outline the proposed changes in each of the categories. So within the phase development agreement, the subarea planner OCP elements and zoning elements. So the subarea plan covers the entire geographical area of the Swamish, or the Oceanfront Peninsula, which you can see from the top image on the screen. The zoning and the phase development agreement, however, encompass a smaller swath of land, and that's shown in the lower image on the screen. The zoning of that land generally aligns with the subarea plan, though some differences can be seen. Changes to the phase development agreement and the zoning only impact the area highlighted in the zoning image. As the zoning image conveys, zoning of the CD69 zone is set up in blocks, with each block having its own set of regulatory controls from density to setbacks, all intended to reflect the work done in the subarea plan. While the Oceanfront Peninsula has a long history, this slide is just here to briefly cover the background related to this application. So the subarea planning process occurred over a long timeframe and was completed in 2010. The land was rezoned to the CD69 zone as the sale of the lands to the developer was occurring, along with the negotiation and adoption of the phase development agreement. A subarea plan amendment was also completed during that time. Significantly, it added language to the plan to reconcile some inconsistencies throughout. The first EP was issued in 2016 and was amended to permit a second EP for carbon engineering in 2020. In 2018, an air suite of amendments was given through reading by council, but has not yet been adopted. And those amendments have been incorporated into this suite of amendments. So before jumping into the actual amendments, I'd like to walk you through some of the key differences between phase development agreements, PDAs, and regular development applications. This is the only phase development application that the district is a party to. A PDA is a negotiated agreement that provides the developer some certainty over a long period of time, while also securing amenities above and beyond what could normally be expected. PDAs are typically done for a period of 10 years, but this particular PDA is for a period of 20 years, reflecting the complexity of this development. For this 20-year period, the developer is exempt to any changes to the zoning bylaw and subdivision and development control bylaw, unless they explicitly agree to those changes. They're also exempt from any new development permits that are introduced in the official community plan. In exchange, the district has secured several amenities to be delivered, including the Oceanfront Park. These amenities are tied to development milestones. For example, the first residential building cannot receive occupancy until the Oceanfront Park is designed and constructed. Any changes to the phase development agreement, and again, that includes changes to the zoning and subdivision standards, along with substantive changes to the actual agreement, must be agreed to by both parties and authorized by the inspector of municipalities. This application is made of three principal sections, zoning, OCP, and PDA amendments. Both the subarea plan and zoning changes will be done by separate bylaws and then adopted into the PDA. This slide shows which category each of the changes falls into, and we'll start by discussing the miscellaneous changes that are made through the PDA. So the first change and the change that propelled this application to the PDA concerns the roads. So over the last two years, staff have worked with the developer to review the plan for future roads at the oceanfront. The roads highlighted in yellow on the screen represent the more substantial dedication of public roads to the district. The dedication of approximately 940 additional meters of district roads is a desirable public goal for the future of the Oceanfront community. While the district will take on maintenance costs for these roads, the agreement ensures a generous pedestrian-focused public realm with sidewalks exceeding a width of two meters, generous landscaping, and dedicated active transportation opportunities. The update to the phase development agreement includes revised road cross-sections for both the public and private roads. This image shows a cross-section for the village, which includes a 6.6-meter flex space that can be utilized by both bikers and walkers, and also shared with parking for a limited time. The goal here is to create an active public feeling arena in the village. Because the subdivision and development control bylaw road standards only apply to district-owned or maintained roads and not to private property, the developer is only bound to meet the minimum standards for fire access, and all road standards would be negotiated through each DP. This thorough review of roads and commitment to a generous public realm ensures the key oceanfront roads will be constructed to today's best practices. So in order to bring the PDA in line with the current directions of the zoning bylaw update for green energy systems, density bonus incentive, the developer has volunteered to update the phase development agreement and commit to ensuring that 80% of the residential gross floor area is powered and heated using only renewable energy sources. 80% of residential development would be aligned, well-aligned with the expected subscription rate under the forthcoming green energy density bonus system in the rest of Swamish. Part of the rationale for holding back the last 20% is to allow for the consideration of rental housing for this portion of GFA, which may be cost prohibitive to provide if electrified hot water tanks are required. Further conversations regarding rental housing may occur as part of the forthcoming rezoning application for recently acquired lands on the oceanfront that are outside of the phase development agreement area. The applicant has asked the district to consider allowing on-street parking in the village on district roads for the life of the phase development agreement, which would help establish the commercial area in the village. The generous public realm in the village would permit the inclusion of some parking. Staff recommend that the applicant be asked to replace the parking with activation, including furnishings and/or public art at the end of the life of the phase development agreement. Five stalls would remain indefinitely in front of the presentation center. The image on the screen is a rendering of roads in the village which align with the cross-section previously shown. It is estimated that somewhere between 35 and 50 parking stalls may be available within the village. Other updates to the PDA include updates to the flood language, an additional flood report, the updated subdivision plan, the addition of updated recommendations regarding intersections, lighting, and street trees as schedules to the phase development agreement. In 2015, so we're talking about the subarea plan here and official community plan, a subarea plan amendment was adopted that provided greater flexibility of the siting of uses on the Oceanfront Peninsula. This was done by introducing a maximum gross floor area amount for several land uses on the entire peninsula, above which would trigger an OCP amendment. Even with the flexibility that this 2015 amendment provided, the removal of a cap on commercial space within the CD69 zone would require removal of the equivalent cap located in the subarea plan. Schedule I will also require updating to reflect increases in two stories and floor area ratio where it is inconsistent with the zoning. And so now we'll talk about zoning. So the changes to the zoning are either to offset the gross floor area or parking loss from dedication to public roads to promote the construction with mass timber, to align setbacks with new road cross-sections and planning best practices, and to increase commercial space. Our staff proposed adding the use education and training institution to block B and C1. These changes were approved by council as part of the 2018 suite of changes, but were never adopted. The Oceanfront Subarea Plan identified block E as the education and institution block. That's the blue block on your screen. The block was created with an understanding that the block's mix of institutional buildings and student staff housing would create a complementary bridge between the employment lands to the south and the residential lands to the north. The Green Technology Center has the potential to enhance the transition from employment to education by offering a blended uses within the building itself. This could further apply to other buildings in block B and C1. The proposed amendments add, adds education and training institution to all of blocks B and C1. The maximum gross floor area for the entire oceanfront building out is secured in the PDA and the subarea plan and the CD69 zone. Proposed changes to the floor area ratio in this suite of amendments is, with the exception of the changes to block B, not intended to increase the overall developable gross floor area for the oceanfront, but rather ensures that the developer can still achieve the same gross floor area. The dedication of private land to public roads results in a loss of developable area. The parcel sizes of the blocks affected by the road dedication shrinks, and these changes are to FAR are shown in this table on the screen. Block B has a different change proposed. Its proposed increase the floor area ratio from 1.0 to 2.2. This increase represents increases improved in 2018 from 1.0 to 1.5. The loss of land due to public roads, which is an additional increase from 1.5 to 1.7 for area ratio. And, and then an additional increase on top of that to 2.2. This amendment also includes a hard cap of 8,000 square meters of overall residential GFA for block B. This ensures that the employment, as the employment gross floor area increases to 2.2, it does not also provide an increase to the potential residential gross floor area, which is currently set at 25% of the overall employment space. The CD69 zone sets the maximum amount of commercial use on the oceanfront plans at 27,666 square meters. So the applicant would request the remove of the cap on commercial space as well. The applicant proposes revised setbacks to blocks B, C, C1, and G. The setbacks in blocks A through C1 align with the new road cross-sections as the new road dedication and cross-sections largely secure the extent of the public realm. The setback in the red box apply only to commercial uses. Best practices indicate that commercial uses should not be too far setback because they encourage a lively public realm. The higher setback for residential spaces align with policies within the subarea plan and best practices that speak to creating a public-private interface, as well as providing some aggregate private space in the front setback. This theory is largely the driver for the requested changes to block G, which is largely untouched by the revised road cross-sections. The developer is exploring building much of the oceanfront utilizing mass timber. When replacing steel, mass timber is less carbon-intensive material estimated to reduce carbon emissions by between 15 and 20%, while also sequestering carbon. Instruction using mass timber does require more height to accommodate floor systems, which require approximately three feet per floor as opposed to traditional construction, which would only require one foot per floor system. Staff proposed incentivizing using mass timber by implementing a height bonus to accommodate the additional height required to build with mass timber. The proposed height bonus would also include a requirement to provide overhyped commercial space on the ground floor where commercial and employment uses are proposed. The conversion of private roads to public roads discounts the developer's ability to count off-street parking stalls on roads towards the final parking count. The table above outlines the net loss of parking by each block. This parking reduction will be shared across developments within the same block. The oceanfront does not qualify for the lower downtown parking standards, and some parking will be provided on-street. In terms of public engagement to date, to inform the community per policy, the application was posted to the district's development showcase, and two development signs have been posted onsite. Staff received one comment with a public information meeting request. The comment noted that it was difficult to understand what was happening, and so staff offered more information and offered opportunities for conversation. Staff have since launched a public information page for the oceanfront to help provide a more thorough explanation of the changes that are proposed. Because of the nature of the application, staff felt it necessary to provide an additional form for information to the public. Staff have received one phone call since our clarification was necessary. The caller assumed the setbacks included a reduced setback to the catarrol and eliminated the public walkway around the Oceanfront Peninsula. Staff have confirmed that the setbacks from the catarrol have not changed and will not be changing, and that the walkway around the peninsula would be retained. The public information page will be live until March 25. After council feedback, staff will refer potential changes to the inspector of municipalities, as well as draft supporting agreements and bylaws for review by the applicant. Following the closure of the public information meeting, referral responses from the inspector will, staff will schedule a bylaw reading followed by a public hearing. Approval by the inspector will be required before the adoption can be considered. So as for the recommendation, staff recommend that council receive the report and provide feedback on the items noted. And as a reminder, the items noted are the designation of public roads, which again refer to the benefit of district-owned roads, but the implication of shifting gross floor area and discounting off-street parking, the reallocation of gross floor area between parcels, which was driven by the smaller parcel size by parking, the use of off-street parking reductions to reflect public on-street parking, incentivizing use of mass timber by providing a height bonus, and the provision of public on-street parking within the village, the benefit of which may help establish the commercial uses within the village in exchange for degree of activation at the end of the life of the PDA. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Fletcher. So council, I'll now direct your attention to the first bullet point, the designation of public roads. And are there any questions or comments relating to that?
I actually had a couple sort of general questions to start, if I, if I might. Just contextual. So the first one, the report of heat times mentions that amendments were previously suggested but not adopted. I'm just wondering if you can provide some context. Are these things that came to council previously, and council elected not to pursue them, or they just never got to council?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, the amendments did get three readings from council, but were not referred to the inspector of municipalities, so never received a sign-off from the ministry. And part of that was because the, the conversation for public roads within the oceanfront had begun. So then the thought was we could roll those amendments into a future amendment if public roads were agreed to.
Okay, thank you. And, and the next, is this an amendment to the existing PDA where it doesn't reset the clock? Or if we sort of move forward this, would this reset the clock and, and it would start again another 20 years from when this gets approved, if we approve something?
Through the chair, this does not reset the clock. It is considered a major amendment, but it does have, it has no bearings on the timeframe of the phase development agreement unless it was agreed to by both parties.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'll stand down for now, but I may have a couple of questions about roads. Should I go ahead with those if there's no other people with road questions or?
They were speaking, or about to speak.
Oh, sorry.
You're muted. Can't hear you.
We couldn't hear you, councillor Race.
Oh, okay.
You froze there. Okay, so did you, did you call on someone?
You are up.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that confusion. Ms Fletcher, can you go over the Area A piece again around the roads and the parking? So in my head, that was to be more of a pedestrian sort of Granville Island kind of feel. And now we're putting in quite significant roads there based on the cross-sections. But then that will become a public realm again after the 20-year? Is that right? Did I summarize that correctly?
Yeah, through the chair, that is correct. So the applicant had specifically asked to allow for some on-street parking within that village area that, yes, is a more pedestrian, woozer-type road, that which can accommodate parking, so that mixed-use feeling, to help establish or to incite commercial tenants, because there is still a perception that on-street parking is necessary. And the staff recommendation at this point would be to consider it for the life of the phase development agreement, but require further on-street activation. So site furnishings, public art were the things that came to mind at the end of the phase development agreement. So it would return to the public realm exclusively, and only the five stalls in front of the proposed presentation center would remain following the conclusion of the phase development agreement.
You know, it's counterintuitive because you see all these cities eliminating cars to activate areas and give them over to the pedestrian realm. So I'm a bit cautious about that. So in line with that, what is our concept for transit and where transit accesses this portion of the road? Like, what's the sort of through the phase development agreement and then post-phase development agreement if we give back that, that area to pedestrians?
Through the chair, I'm wondering if Mr. Merrow has some more information on transit.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dave Merrow, Director of Major Projects. Yeah, so transit, the main transit loop does not go through that village area, that sort of secondary road through lot A. I would add to what Jessie had said previously, the pedestrian realm in that sort of village area, the way the streets have been designed, you can see they're, they're sort of looped. So there are opportunities when there are events or on weekends or deemed necessary, that you could close a portion of those streets within that lot A and essentially turn it into a pedestrian-only realm, similar to what's done on Cleveland. You know, farmers' markets or food vendors or what have you. So that was part of the consideration in the design to allow the ability to close off portions of those roads and have that pedestrian-only realm during times when, when it's unofficial. But also, as Jessie had mentioned, really until the bulk of this development is built out, that sort of portion, lot A, and out by the, the Oceanfront Park is, is going to be sort of an island between sort of downtown and then this area that may not have development or may have parts development to this more densely populated area out of the peninsula. So the developer was really keen, and I think it makes sense practically to have the ability in the interim to have people be able to drive out there and have actually the, be able to visit those shops to help those shops be viable in the short, short to medium term until the peninsula is fully built up.
So, okay, my last question on, on this area is should we have a different street cross-section for block A that isn't based on sort of curb, gutter, sidewalk, but rather the different use of materials to delineate who is where in the short term? Because I think if we, if we do a traditional streetscape, it will be very difficult when the end of this PDA comes to pass to then make it a pedestrian realm. Whereas if we design it as a pedestrian realm and make room for cars in the short term, and then we get rid of things like curbs and arbitrary things that you wouldn't need in a pedestrian realm. Like, is there a different way to actually design the street to tell people this eventually is going to be very different than how you're using it right now? And so I think that's my question is if, if we have thought about or, or designed what the pedestrian-only or active-transportation-only cross-section would look like that allows for cars in the short term?
Absolutely. I can take that question. Thanks for that question. And, and perhaps it wasn't made clear in the, in the report, but if you look at the cross-sections, and they are very confusing which cross-section relates to the streets. For the village street, it is actually designed without barrier curbs. So the curbing that we use, which we have to use to manage stormwater, is essentially a flat sort of curb where there's no actual sort of physical delineation between the street and the sidewalk. So the intention, it was exactly what you're mentioning, that it's more of like a woozer-style design that would have travel lanes in the interim, but in the future, it can be used as, you know, there's no, there's no real physical delineation between the street and the sidewalks, as I mentioned.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Stoner, and then seeing the other hands, I'll put myself on the list.
Thank you through the chair. My question on the road specifically, following on a little bit from the mayor's comments, was especially for the side roads, so that, that loops into area A and then B. Is there any consideration of creating one-way roads to reduce the amount of area that's actually designated to cars, given that they are kind of looping in that manner, where you then only have to have one travel lane for the vehicle and perhaps more space for pedestrian and, and active transportation?
Through the chair, I can respond to that. There are, there has been that discussion, however, not with the public dedicated street. There are some, one in particular that goes through the education block that we've sort of thought that might be appropriate as a one-way street. The, the problem, the real problem with the, the main public roads is that we need to ensure that, sort of a give-and-take, we want to minimize the amount of space used for vehicle traffic. But we also have to ensure that, in particular, you know, our emergency services have the ability to navigate that peninsula. You know, it's going to be a densely populated area. We have to make sure that there's enough street width that those vehicles can, can adequately that those vehicles can can adequately go where they need to go. In addition, there are, and I'm not, I can't recall if it's shown in here, but there are major loops for larger delivery vehicles, large semi trucks. We have that light industrial area that's on the Catamol Sluice side where there could potentially be larger deliveries. In addition, you know, potential grocery store area. So, you're gonna have big trucks that have to navigate the peninsula. And you really do need a fair amount of street width to facilitate those turning movements. So, in short, you know, it's something that that is definitely viable for potentially some of those strata streets, which will essentially become part of the circulation within the oceanfront. But I think these key streets that we have shown and that we're discussing today, really from an engineering perspective and a flow, safe vehicle flow perspective, I think they need to be two-way, but absolutely point taken and we'll work with the developer on on creating other opportunities to sort of minimize the the flow of vehicles and really maximize the the active transportation circulation.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have myself and then Councilor Herford. My question is, with this parking, is this parking that would otherwise have to be on development sites, excuse me, and underground perhaps? And so, when we take it away in 20 years, does that leave the development more or less short of parking? The bylaw would ordinarily require?
Through the chair, the the parking on-street in the village won't be counted towards development parking. It's it's added above and beyond. So, it's more the perception of the availability of parking. So, it won't need to be replaced through underground or off-site in the future.
Thank you. That's my question. Councilor Herford.
Then you, in the staff report, it mentions the the potential for paid parking down here to sort of help with the the flow and then and the turnover. And was there is there a, I'd imagine there's a timing to it. Can you speak to the timing is if the first the first commercial unit comes online and then where that need would start would start to come in to sort of manage the turnover there? My question is going more from like, I'm interested in the ability for this, the potential availability of parking to drop customers down and build and have with staff parking or 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 nearby residential just consume it and not actually bump the shared goals. That's my answer.
Through the chair, Councilor Herford, I'm wondering if you can repeat your question. It was a bit hard to hear.
In the staff report, it mentions the paid parking potential. One of my concerns here, I'm generally supportive of that idea. I want to make sure that if we do open this up, it's used for its intended purpose and not as open for parking for residents use daily or staff. So, I want to make sure that we're, if this is to happen, it's called shared goals. I'm just curious about the timing or potential whether it's out of restrictions or in my opinion, I'm more favor of the actual paid parking for these slots.
Thank you through the chair. So, it's something we've been discussing, but in, there's still time to elevate the conversation, but the idea that if we were to provide parking that we were taking away eventually, we would want to implement some form of restriction. So, whether that's paid parking or user restrictions so that it was used for its intended purpose and so that it wasn't perceived as free parking in the long run, so that to counter that expectation that it would always be there, which is where the thoughts about around paid parking are coming from. But that's not something we currently do within the district. So, it will require further conversation with other departments.
Thank you. I have the mayor and Councilor Penningill. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, if we take on these roads, it'll increase our operational costs. It'll increase what we need to set aside in terms of eventually replacing and repairing these roads. So, obviously, we're adding a larger tax base to the oceanfront. But I guess, you know, for citizens, I guess they're wondering what is the advantage to owning these roads aside from the idea of of being able to have more control over them versus just making them strata roads like any other development and allowing the strata to cover the operation and maintenance over time? I guess, can you just spell that out more clearly to the community about why we would bring these roads into our operational domain?
Happy to answer that. Yeah, there are, there are a number of reasons why this is a benefit to the district and the community as a whole. With strata roads, so before this proposal, the only road that was going to be municipally owned was the main road that goes north-south through the development. So, that road, we would have the ability to dictate what what it looked like, how wide the travel lanes are, how wide sidewalks are, how many street trees there are. And so, we can really define and create a really great public realm where the community can can use that street. Strata roads, there are no requirements or we have no ability to dictate or sort of create a good public realm. So, essentially, there's no minimum width of road or there's we essentially can't potentially get, you know, good sidewalks, good bike lanes, lots of street trees, good grassed boulevard areas. Whereas if the district owns them, we have the ability to, like I said, provide that great public realm and make it a a usable space and a place where where we have adequate space to, you know, have lots of people on the sidewalks and bikes and pedestrians. In addition, there's, you know, there's utilities in the roads. There's water mains, there's sewers. With a strata road, you know, the strata owns owns the road and we have our district utilities that run through them. So, we have to have these agreements that allow our works crew to go in there and and dig up the pipes and do any repairs that we need to do. And a lot of times, we run into issues with strata roads where they're too narrow and the utilities get kind of bunched in. And it's really difficult to go in and replace them in the future due to to just space constraints and conflicts. So, again, with the ability to have these these public roads, we can space the utilities where we want them. We have the easy ability to go in there at any time and maintain them and replace them and whatever else we need to do, because it's a it's a publicly owned road. In addition, with this, with this amendment to the the PDA, we have also have the opportunity to use current road standards for this design. As Jesse mentioned earlier in the presentation, the PDA locked the development into a previous 2015 subdivision and development control bylaw. And in that bylaw, the standards for roads and active transportation infrastructure are really not what we expect nowadays from from developers and from from development in general. You know, sidewalk widths are much narrower. Bike lanes are narrower. So, with this addition of these public roads, we're now able to design them in a way that meets current standards, which has a heavy emphasis on active transportation. So, we can get really good up-to-date facilities. That's what I have to say. Jesse, I don't know if you have anything else to add then?
No, I think that there's a really good summary. Thank you.
There's, if I follow up, there's no way to improve the or achieve the streetscapes that we're after just through the changes we're making now and still leave those as strata roads.
Through the chair, it's, it would be very difficult. It would have to be negotiated. To that extent, we can only require emergency access essentially with roads. So, I I think the best example of that would be sort of like in the Eagle Wind where you have like the thorough roads. Like, that's what we that's the minimum standard that they need to meet. Anything above that is negotiated.
Thank you.
Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first, just following up with some of the mayor's questions. I mean, it does seem to me that we are possibly gaining some control if we move forward to this, but we're offering a lot of density and also taking on, it seems, a lot of future cost. And so, I'm wondering if we maybe, you know, my inclination would be to you know, exchange for the density and a lot of benefit for this development. Look at the developer maintaining these as strata roads, but with, you know, negotiated standards. I guess, one of my concerns with what we're talking about is is it seems the plan is to incentivize or prefer or build around car-dependent business models. And I think that's not the direction I'm inclined to go. And, you know, I I wonder if a a better solution, given some of our goals, is to really think about what our transit offerings are going to be around all the loops. Is a revitalization tax appropriate here to from day one, help those businesses get established, but make sure they're non-car-dependent businesses? Because I, you know, I I think even if our goal is to change the parking when the PDA expires, how do we transition out of those businesses? How do we get those car-dependent business models that that are successful in theory and operating there to to move out or to fundamentally change how their business works? It seems like to me that we're building in the same problem that we're just gonna have to deal with. And I personally like to deal with that problem now and help those non-car-dependent businesses and business models get established now. And I guess, so I guess that's a comment. The the one question is, I wasn't clear from the the I can't remember what they're called, but the the cross sections, where in the short versus long term, there are separated bike lanes versus separated pedestrian lanes. That wasn't quite clear to me. I'm wondering if staff can expand on that a little bit.
Through the chair. Yeah, I can address a couple of those comments there. So, just for clarification, Councilor Penningill, with respect to the your last point there on the short term versus long term active transportation facilities, are you implying like until the the roads are fully built out, sort of in their interim condition where they're they are now versus when they're fully built out with curb, gutter, sidewalk? Is that, was that the intent of your question? Or if you could just please clarify that, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, in terms of businesses getting customers there and so on, how long will they have to wait before there's bike lanes, separated bike lanes and and separated? Is this something that happens in 20 years? Is this something that happens right away, but we're allowing parking on the sidewalks and bike lanes? Or, you know, is there, yeah, I'm not quite sure how these things relate?
I see. Thank you. So, I guess the the biggest piece of that sort of interim condition is the main road out to the end of the peninsula. As that's sort of going to be in its elevated state as it is now, until the the land adjacent to that road gets developed, where it gets brought up to the flood construction level. With that main road in the interim, there will be a three-meter-wide paved active transportation lane adjacent to the the vehicle travel lane. So, until, like I said, the development gets built out along that made road, that'll be the main sort of active transportation route on that road. There will obviously still be the the perimeter trails around the peninsula. But that's the main north-south connection. With respect to the village itself, there is still with with the the parking areas in that village area, for example, there's still adequate we've ensured through this process for the parking and people to be on their bikes and and walking. So, so even in this interim condition in the village where there is parking allowed, there is still ample room for for people to to use their bikes and and walk. And then if I could just touch on one other point that was raised specifically with respect to public versus strata streets and the maintenance thereof. In a development like this, where, you know, it's densely populated, there's lots of businesses, there's, you know, education institutions, what have you. It's very likely that the district would want to maintain these major streets anyways. Leaving maintenance of of streets that are heavily used by, you know, a large a large section of the population, leaving that maintenance up to a private contractor contracted by a strata is is prone for difficulties. You know, snow gets pushed onto onto streets that we then have to deal with. They're not quite as responsive as our district crews can be. So, even in a situation where a lot of these roads were strata, we would likely still want to negotiate the ability to have district staff maintain roads to ensure that they're maintained quickly, appropriately, and to the high standard that we that the district expects. So, I just wanted to to say that point to your your strata maintenance. And then there's one other comment, Jesse, that maybe you could address.
Thank you. Yeah, through the chair, I think just the comment about the density is what Dave's referring to. And just to clarify that we're not, there's no additional true density, the gross floor area that is able to be built is the same. It's just that as public roads are dedicated, the parcel size, so the amount of developable full gross floor area that the developer is entitled to shrinks. So, the increase in floor area ratio, with the exception of Block B, is just to offset that smaller parcel size. And then Block B, of course, the developer is proposing to increase the employment space overall. And that would be the only true increase to density.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And just one final piece, you you said there's going to be adequate space through the chair for pedestrians and bikes. But does that, are we talking about separated lanes or there's just in our minds enough calculated width to accommodate all of that?
Through the chair, it's, it's very much dependent on the road. There are different designs for the various roads throughout the development. Some have separated facilities and others are on-street. It, you know, we've, we've had a really in-depth discussion internally with all of our staff or engineering staff or transportation staff to really nail down what the ideal type of facility is, whether it's on-street or separated. So, throughout the various parts of the development, it does vary. Some are multi-use, some are dedicated bike lanes and dedicated sidewalks. So, it really depends where, which street and where within the development you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Now, go to Councilor Herford. And then if there's nothing else, then I'm going to circle back and see if we can wrap this particular bullet point up and move on to the next one. Go ahead, Councilor Herford.
Thank you. My question is, all these calculations and, thank you for the clarification on the wide, like the the public road rather than the strata road, are the calculations done from in the just gross floor area done from for being a strata road to this wider footprint that would be a public road? Or is it done from having no road there to now having a public road there? I just wasn't sure that starting point or if that makes a difference.
Through the chair, and I just want to clarify that I understand, are you asking if the parcel size is calculated inclusive of the strata road?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so in in the, if none of, if we were not seeking public roads, the parcel size, the way that they would calculate density on the parcel, which would be inclusive of several buildings, would include that strata road. So, the all of that density would be in the building, but it would include the overall parcel, if that makes sense. And so, when we dedicate some of that parcel to public road, they lose that gross floor area. So, while they would be building on the road, the ability to include that in the parcel is additional gross floor area for them to build within that four-area ratio.
Okay. Thank you. That makes sense.
Okay, seeing no other hands. Let me just, oh, Mr. Buckson, do you want to make a comment? Okay, seeing no other hands. Um, let me just, oh, Mr. Buckson, do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to pick up on one final item with respect to the strata roads. One significant difference between a strata road and a public road is public roads are open to everyone all the time. Strata roads are, they have the potential that the strata can, can choose who can be on those roads. You can limit that ability through statutory right-of-ways or covenants, but as private property, there is the potential for, for some form of limitation or exclusion. So that doesn't exist with a public road. So that's perhaps one of the most significant public realm differences between a a strata road and a public street. And I just wanted to lay that on council's table.
Thank you. Uh, so I've made some notes and I'm gonna look at the council, make sure I haven't missed anything, but the points that I've heard raised are with respect to final design, anticipate no cars. One-way streets, consider the possibility. Parking for customers, not residents or staff, and so some form of restriction on that. And I'll stop with those three because I know we've had discussions about strata versus public and so forth, but I don't know that we've changed the direction we're going in those discussions. But I'll leave it to council to make comments on that. Meryl.
Yeah, I have no further direction on, on making these public roads. I think it makes good sense. I, I just think we should be prepared for those questions at public hearing if we get them. Because people are curious about, well, what does it mean in terms of operational cost? What does it mean in terms of, you know, uh, the taxpayer? And, and I think we can make the argument that, of course, we're adding all these new residents and businesses to the oceanfront. So it probably comes out in the wash, but I, that idea of this being in the public realm and being under our control is, is compelling to me. So that village-street design that is in the ISL report, I think that we should call it temporary or or have a before and after. Because if we don't put that into the public thinking now, that this is a temporary road right-of-way, like 20 years from now is a long time and people's memories are short and this council won't be this council and this staff won't be this staff. And so I think it's really important to show a before and after. So this is the temporary, you know, I'm supportive of, of kind of having a temporary car-based public realm there. Uh, cause as Mr. Merrill says, it's going to be an island for a while, disconnected from everything else. But we should be very clear in our documentation and in the, the PDA that this is a temporary one to the end and here's what it looks like. And it can just be a rough design. I don't need it all to be, you know, landscape architect app and everything, but I just think we need to create that history in the documents from today. So that would be my only additional feedback on this item. Uh, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So that's the fourth one. So I have final design, uh, one-way streets, parking for customers, and now designation of these roads as temporary for vehicles, for temporary parking. Council Anderson, Council Herbert.
Thank you. I'm hesitant on the last point. I think it is more important that we learn over the next 20 years. I think that there's considerable uncertainty as to what, what will evolve regarding use of alternate transportation. Of course, we have the vision. Of course, we have this objective. But I don't think we know enough, and I think that we should consider that we have an experiment here. We need to take that experiment seriously and spell out our, our objectives. But I think this is the emphasis I would like to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Herbert?
Thank you. I was just wondering, uh, at, at the end of this, um, again, to support the business that, uh, well, I said, that island analogy is great. Uh, I think getting, getting people down there, making, making those viable spaces is important. I wonder about having a set schedule for the removal of the parking, whether it's a phase out, because I think that the way it's presented is that in 20 years, at the end, it'll just be gone. And that seems like it'll be a very dramatic shift. And I think that the need for that will, the need for the parking there may reduce over time as the, the density of, as residents get, get populated as, uh, as the active transportation and trans network grew. So, um, I'd love to see some consideration there. Some, some phasing to the, to the, sort of, the withdrawal of that, of that use in order to be prescriptive as to what that is at this point. But I, I think that's more realistic than at the end of this agreement, the parking ends up. This doesn't seem like that'll be a, a smooth transition on land on the plate of some future council to, uh, to wrestle with. So I think that, um, really having it be clear from the beginning that there is, that there's some phase that has to be valued. We'll get the staff to figure out the best to do that.
Thank you. Council Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a point of clarification for staff in terms of what in that lot A area is considered to be temporary in the, in the long term. So is it just the parking or is it also the road is anticipated to be more transformed into pedestrian area and limited traffic to just emergency vehicles and, and transportation trucks if needed to get to the hotel and, and other areas. But the long-term vision really being that there's actually not gonna be very much car traffic in that village area in 20 years from now.
Through the chair, uh, and Mr. Merrill, if I'm incorrect, feel free to jump in here, but, um, yeah, the, the vision is that it is a shared pedestrian vehicle cycling streetscape in the long run. So the parking only is the only part of this that is temporary. Vehicles will be allowed to continue, but, uh, as Mr. Merrill was talking about earlier, there will always be the ability to shut down the street and have it be like for events, for example. Uh, and that's where the, um, like the curbing, as we were talking about before, is the way that it is, is so that it is that more shared street amongst different uses. And that's the long-term vision, whereas, yeah, the parking would be the temporary portion of this.
Okay, that's interesting. Um, just generally on the, uh, a comment for the move towards, uh, the public realm and bringing these roads into the from strata to public roads, I'm generally supportive of that direction. Um, I do think that there, it does make good sense in the long run and there's strong value there for bringing it under, uh, public, uh, in, into the public realm. And I do think we need to give a little bit more thought to, as council race identified, kind of a, a one-way road for some of these areas. We know that that is possible in, uh, in other areas where you can still ensure that there's emergency vehicle access and transportation access, whether it's scramble island or gas town. And then also I think this piece for lot A does need some further reflection in terms of, or at least clarity when it comes back for, to council for readings, um, in terms of not full design of what that streetscape will look like, but I'm thinking in particular, like, it will make a huge difference on like what the road surface is built out of, even just in terms of like what that connection to that space will feel like and how that can immediately slow vehicles down and make more space and more com- like, make it more comfortable for, for the pedestrians. So, um, that's a piece that I would be looking for when it comes back to council.
Thank you. So so I have, I'll just repeat my notes. I have final design, anticipate, um, future without the vehicles. Consider, uh, one-way streets, parking for customers, not residents or staff, so some form of restriction. Some designation is temporary. Uh, I take Council Anderson's point. In my mind, I think the two can both exist. There certainly will be a learning experience going forth. If everything goes well, then I think the long-term vision seems to be consistent. And reducing parking over time, some phased withdrawal from that, as Council Herbert suggested. So, did I miss anything, Council? Is there anybody opposed to any of those? Staff have notes of those. We'll move on to the next bullet point. Reallocation of gross floor areas between parcels. Ms. Hamilton, if you could just give us a couple of line summary of that issue.
Through the chair, uh, the reallocation of gross wire between parcels is again, that increase in four-air ratio to offset the loss of strata roads to public roads.
And so that council is, is actually wrapped up in the previous one very closely. But the understanding I have is that there is actually no increase in gross floor area. So in that sense, there is no increase in density to the development area as a whole. But on individual parcels, there will be more units on a more confined space to equal or more density than confined space to equal, in effect, what is there today. Council Stoner.
Yeah, it took me a little while to wrap my head around this one, just in terms of how the calculations are made and how that may not actually affect density in the long term. I guess the question that I have is, does it change the potential shape or size of the building? Or is it that because there was already expected to be a road there, that there's actually no real anticipated change in the shape or size or height of the building either? It's just really a calculation issue more so than a change in the physical structure that you might expect on that parcel.
Through the chair, overall, yes, there was a road expected there and there were setbacks, uh, established. So the shape of those buildings overall would not necessarily, uh, need to change. It's still constrained by other zoning regulations. Um, in some situations, it may mean, um, that they may increase lot coverage. Overall, they're still within the zone constraints, however. So there's, there's not a massive shift to building that's anticipated because again, yes, roads were expected there.
Thank you.
You know, so Council, any, Council Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, so two things and I'm, uh, so, uh, uh, similar to, to Councilor Stoners, I, I was just thinking about, you know, what does this look at night when all the shops are closed? And this is where I'm not sure how it, it may relate to, if these are public roads and there's much more public space, then maybe this is not an issue, but trying to understand those setbacks and, and what things, you know, what, what's the public space like when the businesses are closed? And, uh, I, I think that's a, a concern I have. I, I don't know, I can't sort of look at what we have here and say we're doing something right or wrong. I, I just don't have a sense of where, where it all ends up. The other piece, I, and maybe I'm incorrect here, but I understood a, a part of this glor- gross floor area change is a removal of the cap on commercial. Um, in, in my concern there, the justification is that, um, you know, the developer would like to have a lot more retail, but in my mind, I'm wondering, you know, will the people working that retail, are they gonna be able to afford the residential here? And so my concern is matching the type of employment to the type of residential, especially as we're worried about traffic and parking and all those things too. So that the, the commercial or employment space we're providing matches the, the residential space in terms of affordability and making sure we find a way to align those. And I have a concern, if we do a whole lot of retail there, those people aren't going to be able to afford to live on the peninsula. And so we're creating this traffic, uh, parking, car problem. Uh, and, and so, um, I guess that's a concern I just wanna flag.
Thank you. Mary Elliott.
I, I think this is the place to ask about that, um, removal of the maximum on commercial space. So I know our employment land model indicates that we have a shortfall. But I am concerned about it displacing other forms of employment. So what are the checks and balances that are in place that this doesn't just become a retail zone? And we miss out on the light industrial, business professional and services that, that people would expect and, and just density of employment. You know, when you open up a shop, you can have one person working there. Um, when you open up a different kind of employment space, you have multiple people potentially working there. So what are the checks and balances that this doesn't just become retail?
Through the chair, so the employment land model did take, uh, in their, their long-term model did include this potential increase in floor area ratio as the long-term scenario. So in terms of the amount of retail in the cap, that is still, um, considered in our, our kind of best-case long-term scenario and still results in a shortfall of that kind of commercial ground floor space. Um, in terms of checks and balances, the block B zone, um, does permit quite a bit of, if these changes go through, of employment space. And that space does vary in uses from, um, like retail grocery ground floor, commercial spaces, and then above-floor uses, uh, such as office space, um, as you mentioned. Um, and so in terms of checks and balances, um, I, I think that's a, that's a bit of a tough question to answer, but there is an incentive there because residential is so confined to add those additional uses above and beyond the ground floor. Office use on the ground floor is not necessarily the best and highest use of that space. Um, so overall, I think we will see more employment space above. I don't know if that helps answer your question. I'm wondering if Mr. Villanueva has anything to add there.
I think one comment I'll add here is that, um, you know, I've been a part of this discussion since my first term, and this is really new for this council. And our public hasn't really been, um, paying attention to this, uh, in a long time either. So I think when we, when we bring it back for readings, it's important to try and describe some of these changes in like the types of uses. So when we say commercial, what do we mean by commercial? And really help the public understand what the uses would be. And then, and then talking about the employment space that's non-commercial and, and the types of things that we imagine would go into that space. Cause that, it is one of my concerns, is that we end up with a lot of commercial and not the density of employment that is spelled out. It, or what we anticipated for this area. So I wanna be able to really understand clearly how we're making sure that we're getting the density of employment that, that was imagined when we established the P D.
Thank you. Council Anderson, do you have your hand up? Okay. Anything else, Council, Council Stoner?
Yeah, just done, following on that question from the mayor, I'm wondering if it's at all possible, or would it be feasible to then be a bit more specific? So rather than us increasing the cap for commercial use broadly, that we actually be very explicit that that's an increase in floor area for employment use of a specific type. So it's not retail-specific. Just trying to think of how we can be a little bit more explicit to ensure that that increase in gross floor area is used for high employment space rather than just an increase in retail space.
Through the chair, I just wanted to clarify in block B, and apologies, I didn't bring this up before. Um, I'm still myself learning the zone. We do have conditions of use within block B for those uses. Um, and we do have a provision that does say retail store or commercial service uses. Which is not explicitly defined, but we could definitely categorize those uses for, um, future presentations. Permitted in block B shall only be located on the ground level at the south end of block B, adjacent to the oceanfront park, or an adjacent public parking facility fronting a highway. So there is a limitation there within where those more commercialized uses can go. Um, and the overall increase in floor area ratio does only, uh, does apply to employment as a whole within that zone, as opposed to just those commercial spaces. Um, the cap in the zoning overall, um, so that applies to the whole oceanfront, is the only part of that that does apply to, um, like, commercial-specific floor area.
So let me just ask, I mean, if, in practical terms, if we took the cap off, where might the additional commercial space go? Are we talking about possibly another floor? Or, because we're not really enlarging the footprint of the building, are we? So the ground floor availability doesn't necessarily increase. Where might additional commercial space go?
And through, through the chair, the, there are opportunities for commercial space, uh, in, like, throughout different blocks on the ground floor that aren't necessarily contemplated at this time as commercial space. It would just be opening up that opportunity. It would just be opening up that opportunity there. That cap applies to all the blocks. So when they've done their, when the developers on their master planning exercise, they've allocated ground floor based on that cap and then based on conditions within the zoning by block. But there may be future other opportunities of in other blocks where they're not contemplating it this time. And I see that Ms. Mulligan has popped up and I'm wondering if she has some additional information to add.
Go ahead, Ms. Mulligan.
Thank you through you, the chair. Yeah, I just wanted to add in the the question with regards to retail space and and density and how the space ultimately gets used. We will be coming forward to council to present the results of our employment space needs assessment work. But in terms of preliminary findings, one of the key elements that were really that is really critical in terms of the location of various industries that are of interest to our emerging sector plan, including you know, advanced, sorry, adventure-based digital media, marketing and film is close proximity to retail services. And those retail services that those businesses are looking for are things like restaurants, access to various services that employees would use. So in terms of complementing the industry growth that we're looking to achieve, I think having a retail component on the oceanfront is critical in terms of of actually attracting firms that want to be on the oceanfront. That being said, you know, the work that Jesse has been doing with planning team and through the oceanfront is also considering that the allocation of overall employment space that we're focused on creating a high density employment that's high wage growth. So I just wanted to point out that definitely our preliminary findings are are pointing to the need that there is a bit of a colocation occurring and it's a desire, it's desirable for these firms to see that there's this vibrancy occurring in the in the area in which they're establishing themselves.
Thank you. So also the concern I've heard, we're not necessarily making a decision today around this is with respect to employment density and perhaps becoming overly focused on one sector. Are we happy with that kind of a statement going back to staff? Council Anderson.
Yeah, just like to add one bit of clarification from my point and and I don't, you know, I do see value with retail there. But I do think we have to think carefully about the the workforce for that retail and being able to access that work without a car easily. And so do we need to balance that with some sort of affordability housing requirement or something? I don't know. I I think, you know, not don't want to send a message of I'm opposed to retail there, opposed to supporting that. But I want to make sure that the easy accessible housing workforce piece is tied in with that appropriately.
Yeah, let me just make a comment on that and staff and correct me if I'm wrong, but the PDA locks in the zoning that was agreed to back last term. However, there is a piece coming up. There's recently acquired lands, the BC Rail Triangle, as it's sometimes referred to, which is slated for some form of residential development. And so for a council, there will be an opportunity to have input into how that particular triangle is zoned because that's not at the moment covered by the PDA. My question stating that, staff?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct. We have received an application for rezoning of lands on the oceanfront outside of the PDA. And so that will go through a traditional negotiation, including conversations about affordable housing.
Thank you. Council Anderson.
I'd like to, my remarks should be focused on block C. We were discussing floor area ratio, but block C is also, there's proposed changes to parking stalls. My comment is that there had this block C in our subarea plan and throughout the years of oceanfront planning has been, the vision is for marine oriented employment. Now, the developer has investigated, made all kinds of investigations on issues and constraints relating to the waterfront and remediation and all kinds of factors. My point is that these constraints, to my knowledge, have not really been brought to council for its orientation or review. And I think this is important. As we look at the types of employment, certainly marine oriented employment was and always has been part of the vision. Now, the constraints on this may be real, but I think that we should be aware of them. And they have implications perhaps through a marine action strategy lens. So I'd just like to highlight the issue of block C and where we're going with floor area ratio and parking, we don't know, like, there's other things too. But I think that block C needs some some additional focus in light of what we're discussing here. What is the direction of what type of employment and economic activity that we're after? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think just quickly, you know, one of the things that community members talk to me about when they're trying to understand the oceanfront development is going back to that sort of original vision that it's a third park, it's a third employment, it's a third housing. And I think when we talk about gross gross floor area, it gets confusing quickly for the general public. And so I think however we bring this forward, it's about, does this honor the vision of the community? When it was helping to design what it wanted out of out of the oceanfront? And how do we simplify this to show that we're still honoring that commitment? But rather just providing the the way I see it, some flexibility because we can't predict who will be there, what type of businesses. So it's just trying to provide a bit of flexibility to move some things around to accommodate whichever employers arrive there. And I think councillor Anderson's comment about block C is important consideration about will we achieve the type of employment that we've always been talking about for block C? What are those constraints? And we should probably understand them sooner rather than later. And this came up in the marine zoning discussion about making that all P four. When actually some of that was there to allow for access to marine services in the Catamoule slough. And so if there are real constraints, I agree with councillor Anderson, we should be aware of them sooner rather than later. So that we don't start creating the the peninsula in opposition to a marine action strategy that wants to see that type of employment located somewhere on our waterfront. So it is something to keep in mind, maybe not for these readings, but somehow we need to have that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. And I want to keep this moving. So are there any other concerns on this particular topic? The one we have is removing the cap on commercial and possibly too much emphasis in one sector. Further, have I missed anything? Okay. So staff has a note of that will go on to the possible use parking reductions to reflect public on-street parking. Maybe if you could just explain this issue, Ms. Hamilton.
Fletcher.
Through the chair, thank you. The the possible use of off-street parking reductions like public on-street parking was the issue we spoke of where the developers requesting a reduction to their parking count across the block. So for example, in block A, they're requesting a reduction of thirty seven stalls across the entire development. And that is because they can no longer count the on-street parking towards their total off-street parking provided where they had intended to do that during their master planning exercise.
Did I ask the question a minute ago about does this on-street parking we're talking about reduce the parking requirements in the bylaw? Is that what we're talking about here?
Through through the chair, and generally speaking, if these roads were not public roads, they could count that towards their off-street parking requirements and they cannot if they become public roads.
Okay.
Just to clarify that, though, I mean, I think if I understand effectively, we just be accommodating that same amount of parking on our public roads. So there's no net change in total parking. It's just they don't get to count it in their numbers. It's sort of in our numbers because it's our streets now. Is that the idea?
Through the chair largely, yes, that is the case, although we may not provide as much parking as they were intending. Or for example, in the village, we are only intending to provide parking for a certain period of time. So overall, there would be in the long run, a deficit to what the bylaw would require. But for the purposes of a development permit coming forward, they would not necessarily need to seek a variance because there would be this added bonus of additional stalls that we would be sort of counting for them. Some will be there, some will not, but we're not entirely sure exactly what that will look like.
This is the parking we're talking about phasing out over twenty years?
Through the journal, it's it's a it's a combination of both. It's um, it's it's a bit tricky. So if we talk about block B, for example, there will be some on-street parking on the public roads. And on the roads that were formerly strata, there will be some on-street parking, but not necessarily to the degree they had anticipated. And it when those roads were strata roads, they could count that towards their off-street parking total. So the amount that would be required for each development. But because they can no longer count that, they're requesting that we reduce that from what's required of them.
Yeah, I think I understand that part, but I'm just sort of wondering how much of it will be left in twenty years? And that at the end of twenty years, does that leave them short of parking from what they might otherwise have provided?
Through the chair, in some situations it might, and in some situations, depending on the block, there will still be on-street parking provided, so.
Mary Elliott.
I have no issues with this change.
Any other comment in council? Council Anderson.
With respect to parking generally and off-street parking, I'd like to suggest that that either the developer and perhaps in concert with district planning, that we keep an eye out for opportunities for benchmarking with elsewhere. The oceanfront is not a unique type of project with respect to these issues, exactly these issues. Everett, Washington, Stockholm, Toronto, Bremen, Malmö, there are quite a number of very, very similar projects. These are waterfront lands, a little bit just outside of the transit hub or downtown, very similar issues come up. And so I I would just like to encourage that we do some benchmarking. I suggest that these very questions are being struggled with in these other developments. And perhaps this is possibly a note to the developer too, who I know is is doing that type of benchmarking. So these are not unique issues to Squamish or to this this development, parking, off-street and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else. So the only concern maybe was might have been interpreted from my comments. I can live with this. I think we are generally trying to reduce reliance on automobiles. And so hopefully that will happen over twenty years and so we won't require the parking that we seem to require today. There's no other feedback. Any other comments from council? We'll move on to the next height bonuses for mass timber buildings.
So this is referring to the the applicant is contemplating constructing their site largely from mass timber. And in order to do that, the floor system for mass timber building requires extra height to accommodate the beams, which are larger than traditional construction, which is just slab. And so the staff have proposed to incentivize that by permitting the height that would be required to accomplish what they've modeled. If it is built from mass timber and in areas where there is employment space and education space provided, that that space be overheight. So meeting that recommended floor to ceiling height for that that is really desirable from those end users. So in order to achieve the height, you would need to build with mass timber. And in where employment space is provided, that employment space would need to have a minimum height.
Thank you. And so the building heights we're talking about down that area, my recollection is predominantly around four floors. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, through the chair, the the height does vary. So within the villages, two stories or about nine meters. In block B, it's three or four stories and fifteen meters. And then it does get higher in some of the residential areas. One of the areas, they'll have to double check in the zoning, six stories or twenty meters. They are requesting there to go higher if they do build with mass timber. So it does vary through the oceanfront where closer to the water it's lower. And then as you move back towards downtown, it does get a bit higher.
So by my calculation, that's about two feet of floor, basically, that we're talking about adding. Council, any comments? Council Anderson, Council French, Council Herbert.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this direction. I just was seeking clarification from staff. When I did look at the numbers in the density bonus heights, they didn't seem like there was a quick conversion, but am I right that it's about three meters per floor, sorry, three feet per floor? But even with that, the numbers didn't quite add up. So can you just speak to how those calculations were made for the height bonus thing?
Absolutely. It is a bit confounding. So the or confusing, the overall is about three feet per floor. But where the users are, like the hotel is a very good example of this. So there's a hotel proposed in block A. And I believe it's proposed to be six stories. But because of the type of use on the ground floor and they want that to be sort of a mixed hotel retail, they are looking for a higher floor there for that use. So an ideal commercial floor space, clear floor space is about four point five, four point eight meters. So that gets added in as well. So it ranges depending on the type of user and we've tried to be like acknowledge that in each of the zones where the height bonus is proposed. So in the education, each floor needs to be a little bit taller for that clear space for education. And and yeah, there's no great way to straight convert that. What we have done is keep the stories the same for the most part, so that we're not then getting smaller stories overall and not achieving what we want, which is that more usable space for end users.
Council Anderson.
I wonder if I may offer a suggestion to planning department regarding policy context. The there is reference made to section nineteen point six C in the OCP, but I suggest there are two other. May I suggest there are two other areas of policy that should be referenced in a document for the public with respect to mass timber. And we have it in the Community Climate Action Plan. It is the last action item in section big move five. Support or encourage wood-based building materials or other materials that store carbon. So that is to feature our Community Climate Action Plan. Secondly, we have a precedent for this in the Loggers Lane East Plan. And it's on page thirty nine of that plan under energy and climate change where we spell this incentive concept out. That is incentives to for developers proposing to maximize wood-based building materials or other carbon storing materials, et cetera. So there are these two policy items that might be considered for just some context for the public and for people in these documents. Secondly, in the policy under five point seven one two, Ms. Fletcher, and this relates to economic, sorry, yes, it is. That's just what I said, foster economic development. In fact, the mass timber is also belonging needed or could be referenced in this section as well. We have one local manufacturer of mass timber products. And we've had three companies come by in recent years inquiring about opportunities to build plants here. So this relates directly to some wording and phrasing and paragraphs in our economic sector plan documents. So I suggest that the mass timber element does belong also in that section. I'll leave it at that for now, Chair.
Thank you. Council French, followed by Council Herbert.
Thanks, Jerry. And one of the things that really jumped out at me in the report was the note that this change in height doesn't reflect the change in the number of floors. I think that when when this rolls out more public, that'll definitely be something to emphasize that the increase in height is not equal increase in floors. Because it's certainly heard from many people who were concerned about buildings in the downtown looking too high and blocking out these streets. And this plays an important role. And this plays an important role. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Herbert, followed by Counsel Ben Gill.
Thank you. In the report, you mentioned the, I don't really know where this fits. It seems like the best spot for it, but the 80% low-carbon commitment with that 20% being hopefully there to accommodate affordable housing. Maybe think about what step code this, given the sort of overlapping timeframes of our policies here, what step code will these be built in? And I'm excited about the mass timber, I'll get to that. Overall buildings, where are we at with that?
Yeah, through the chair. So the Oceanfront is subject to our building bylaw and to the relevant step code. And I believe this year for residential anyways, we are at the highest step. And then commercial, I believe, we're at step three. So largely, everything coming online will need to be at the highest usable step for that type of construction, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just checking that step code fit into that sort of moment in time. And do we have a commitment for 20% of the housing to be affordable?
Through the chair, there's no commitment. At this time, we are in conversations about potentially introducing some rental housing. So not necessarily affordable, but rental within that remaining 20%. The cost still of providing an electrified hot water tank to that type of construction is still to the extent that they're not sure, they can't accommodate it. So to continue to leave that conversation open for rental housing, we thought it'd be diligent to not have them commit to the low-carbon heating to that percentage of the residential GFA at this time.
That makes sense to me, and I appreciate that clarity. And then if this is mass timber, as presented, to me, this is allowing to be used or facilitating as a use. I'm not seeing it being incentivized. And that's something I'd like to go to that point, where this is something we'd like these buildings to be built, to be built. I don't know what these can use for matters, my assessment wrong. Because it seems to me we're just allowing that extra space per floor. So that could be used if, should they choose to, should develop or choose to. But I'm interested in you, Herbert, incentivizing that so it becomes the, you know, the desired use, desired structure.
Yeah, I think I understand where you're coming from. Through the chair, because of the type of agreement this is, and so maybe the language incentivizes isn't correct. We couldn't necessarily take the height away from them, for example, and then incentivize it back up by building with that type of construction, because the developer would need to agree to that. And it's unlikely that they would, because we're in the phase development agreement. So in order to permit that, the type of construction they're seeking and to accommodate it, so maybe incentive is the wrong word here, allowing that height out front at the beginning instead of going through a variance process each time, was more the impetus for this change.
Okay, and that height, extra height would only be available if used, if the, to accommodate the mass timber. It couldn't be, we're not adjusting the height, and they can use whatever structure.
Through the chair, that is correct. They could only, yeah, take advantage of that additional height if they build with mass timber. And where appropriate, the commercial height is built over height.
Okay. Yeah, I think that incentive wording isn't correct. I'd love to find a way to provide that incentive and motivation. But I see this as facilitating. But thank you for that, very.
Thank you. Counsel Ben Gill, followed by Mary Ellen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to build off a couple comments of my colleagues. I do support actually incentivizing the timber construction if we can. And I think, you know, this is somewhat unique in that it's its own sort of brand-new neighborhood. And so I feel a little bit more, there's a little bit more leeway to consider extra height and extra density, because it's less impactful to existing neighbors. And so, you know, I think that that is worthwhile considering in terms of an actual incentive. But tied to this and the 80/20 energy source split, it strikes me that there is a green energy research center or area set aside there. So in my mind, we have a great potential, and it's its own sort of self-contained new area for, to create the customer base, so to shoot for 100% renewable energy of some sort and incentivize that business, because now they have the customers to provide that energy source. And we're talking about the infrastructure. So does it need some sort of infrastructure instead of the gas lines, some hot water lines, like a mini energy utility or something along those lines? I would hope that we could be really creative and flexible in terms of incentivizing something like that, because in my mind, that hits a whole lot of goals that we have right now. And I just see massive opportunity there. And so I would encourage us to be a little bit ambitious and to push on that. I realize we don't, because of the PDA, we can't require 100% renewable energy or anything at this point. But anything we could do to get there, I think, serves, again, many, many of our goals economically, environmentally, across the board.
Thank you. Mary Elliott?
Just a question for the chair. I have a few comments that are unrelated to the bullet points on Ms. Fletcher's slide. So I just wanted to make sure there was a little bit of time at the end to just add general comments.
I was going to try to provide that. I am mindful of time, and we are a little bit over time. So, but I was going to have sort of a couple of minutes of open time. We're not going to have enough time to renegotiate the Oceanfront Agreement or anything like that. But certainly, there's time for individual comments. So seeing nothing else on that point, I have no other speakers scheduled. We generally are supportive of this initiative. No opposition? Staff have that point? The last is public on-street parking in the village area.
Yeah, so the public on-street parking in the village area, we've spoken to about a bit. And so that's just the benefit and then non-benefits, permitting public on-street parking within that block A on the Woodorf-type streets in exchange for a degree of activation at the end of the light of the PDA or perhaps a phasing. But I do believe we covered a lot of these points in the first point, Counsel Reese.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is this anything new compared to the discussion we had in the first bullet point? Counsel, have any further comment on this particular point? Seeing nothing? And we'll stop with that. But we will, just to make sure I haven't missed something, or there's something that hasn't been said by counsel, open it for just general comments, but I am mindful of time, so focus these comments. It's 10 after now, we're 10 minutes over. So Mary Elliott?
Thank you. I'm related to your bullets, but I think important things for us to consider while this is being negotiated. There's a lot of talk about street trees, and trees are a carbon capture mechanism that's beautiful, creates shade, so cools the streetscape. So I'd like us to put some thought into the best practice. There's other communities around us that are increasing trees in their road right-of-ways to try and avoid these heat islands. So I think now is the time to think about best practices about trees and whether we need to include any language about that. I think somewhere in this agreement now, we need to talk with the developer about aligning their aspirations with our Community Climate Action Plan. And I see the nod to mass timber, and I see the nod to 80%, but technology is going to evolve so much. And I'd love to see language in there around finding ways to be ready for net zero by 2050 or continuing to seek opportunities to achieve, along with the community, that goal. Just something to suggest in the language, and it could be around incentives, because I'm happy to see more employment density down there by some taller buildings, if that helps us get closer and closer to net zero neighborhoods. So to me, I'm certainly open to that. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. But I think if this agreement's open, now is the time to start to align that area. And then the only other place that I think we've learned a lot about through the pandemic is the need for parklets and activated areas and covered spaces throughout. And if there's an opportunity, if that language isn't in there, then to really consider that need for all-weather, all-season outdoor gathering spaces. So those are my last comments. Otherwise, I'm happy with the discussion we've had so far. Nothing to add there.
Counsel French, Counsel Anderson?
Thanks, Chair. And I just had two notes. I don't, haven't seen a lot of wording around overhangs and rain protection. And for this area, I really see it like an area being a place where during a rain event, as we get this once in a while, people can navigate the streets without necessarily the need for an umbrella. And also, other wording that I haven't seen a great deal of in any of this is public art. So just, if this is the time for those elements to be included, then I just want to make sure that we haven't missed that. And then also recognize that maybe that's a level of detail that we're not ready to get into. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself on the list. Generally supportive of these comments. And I think, you know, what we've seen today is, from my perspective, is very much in the public interest and will make this a better development. I echo the mayor's comments and Counsel French's comments. I think the other thing to consider is the wind. And I think there's going to have to be some creative landscaping parks. I'm certainly supportive of the wide-open spaces that these public roads will bring to the development and kind of open it up a little bit. But they also can tunnel wind. And so I think it's going to be important to consider where the wind might blow. And so they are really usable spaces in all conditions. With that, seeing nothing else, oh, Counsel Ben Gill, Counsel Anderson?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to reinforce the mayor's comments strongly. I see this as our opportunity to really set the standard for what building in the climate emergency means. You know, as I look at this right now, it's a lot less, a smaller increase in emissions, but it still represents an increase in emissions at a time when we need to reduce them by 45% in nine years. And so, you know, for me, it's, this is our opportunity to really pull out all the stops and revitalization zone, a density. I think for me, all those things in this area are on the table to help the developer achieve some of that. I think the other piece, though, is not to lose sight of the affordability. Recalling our STR discussion, this is an area where I believe short-term rentals are allowed. So we can also anticipate presumably a high number of tourists there, which means retail's important, but making sure that workforce can, I think, live there is going to be an important component. And maybe the triangle's a piece of that. But I really hope we can consider all of those things and make it happen. And I think there's a lot of exciting opportunity here that I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Last word to Counsel Anderson?
I'd like to emphasize that there, it appears there's a lot of uncertainty as to the end uses of our employment zones here, block B and block C. We've referred to block C already. And I think that we need to consider this in our design. I'd like to refer to Dave Marrow's comment regarding truck access. And it was also in relation, tied to emergency services vehicle access. This is part of the flexibility that we need to consider for the long term. We've learned a lot of hard lessons in the business park already. I wouldn't say a lot, but on certain blocks, we have learned some hard lessons about truck access, and we're going to continue to learn them. So we need to keep in mind flexibility and preserving options for those employment zones. And this is a reality, five-ton and even larger trucks, and accommodating this in our design. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Fletcher and staff. This is a lot of work, and so keep it up. Thank you very much for your presentation today. So counsel, we are now scheduled for a recess. I'm going to give us 15 minutes. We'll come back at 11:30. Beg pardon? Oh, I beg your pardon, emotion, sorry. That's what we're here for. So there is a staff recommendation. Thank you, David. There is a staff recommendation that counsel receive the Oceanfront Amendments Report and provide feedback on the items noted in the staff report of March 9, 2021. And I would suggest adding the words, "and the meeting, committee, the whole meeting of March 9, 2021." Leave it at that. Counsel French moves. Counsel Herbert seconds. Further discussion?
I'll speak to it very briefly. I acknowledge the great work that staff has done. And I think also, there's acknowledgement here for the developer. I've found the folks behind this project to be quite open, quite transparent, and very easy to work with at my level. So staff and everybody involved in this entire planning process have done excellent work.
Thank you. Good words. Anything further, staff? All the question, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, I'll declare the recess. We will come back at 11:30. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, and welcome back. Following this meeting back to order, we're now on, I think, on my agenda, for sub two, District of Squamish Open Data Policy Project. I believe Mr. Griffin is presenting. Is he there? Staff have disappeared.
He was back on.
Yeah. Staff ready to go with this, Rob?
For staff?
Yeah.
Dan's on here. You got Dan and Fran and Sarah and H. Yeah, but yeah, they're all his participants, right?
Yeah.
They're all there. Everybody's ready to go.
Okay. Mr. Griffin, good ears?
Hi, everyone. It's Sarah McJanet. Dan is messaging that he's just trying to unmute himself, so just stand by. Thanks so much.
Who do you want up for people or? People or?
I got it. So that's the presentation, this is people.
He's unmuted. That seems like we know.
There we go. Sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself. I don't know why. Can you hear me now?
This weekend.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn my camera on as well. Technical issues, my apologies. So thank you, mayor and counsel. And thank you, Chair. Today, we're introducing our Open Data Policy Project. It's a project organized by a cross-departmental team, including myself, Dan Griffin, GIA supervisor in the IT department, Sarah McJanet from Planning, Kate Mulligan, Economic Development, Eva Perez in IT, Senior Business Analyst. And our sponsor is Conrad Cordell. Joining us as well is Dr. Ketter Smith from the Center of Engineering Society at Concordia University. Dr. Smith and Concordia are joining us, or they're organized through the MyTax program, which provides half of the funds towards this project. So the district is contributing half the funding, and MyTax is supplying the other half of the funding for a total of $15,000 for the policy development. This project is really centered around unlocking the hidden value of data within our organization. The objectives today, we're going to talk about the strategic alignment of the project, how it aligns with our strategic priorities, the work that we're doing at the district, and the achievements we've made. the work that we're doing at the district and the achievements we've made to date. And we'll be asking for an endorsement of a set of open data guiding principles. And this will set the vision and focus and goals of open data for future policy development. And then we'll talk about our next steps and how the open data team and our partners will work together to develop the policy and guidelines. And we'll talk about our implementation approach and how we plan to further open data at the district. So in terms of strategic alignment, most recently, this was identified through the organizational plan, grow open data to support open government and data driven decision making, supporting O C P monitoring and creating an open data policy. Historically, open data values and the practical opportunities they offered were identified through the digital strategy in twenty sixteen, which stated a goal of embracing the possibilities offered by the revolution and evolution of digital environments. And our O C P twenty forty around furthering the opportunities for involvement and participation in decision making. So really, why are we, why are we, what are the interest in open data? And really, there are three primary drivers. Transparency is the first one. Releasing the social value and commercial value of data with a community focus in our, in our in our respect. And the participation and engagement in furthering those values. So how are we doing at the district? Currently, there are data stewards across the organization in different departments. And these stewards have different levels of interpretation and knowledge. The data management is very distributed and it's off the side of our desks. There's a varying degree of importance and understanding of the value around data. However, departments are increasing increasingly utilizing and relying on data to deliver effective services and programs. And we're building tools and applications and resources through the Technology Transformation Program, thus creating a ton of data. And we want to shift our culture around how we use data day to day for decision making and making that available to staff and council as well. In recent years, we made progress leveraging the available technologies and resources that we have at our disposal. In twenty seventeen, we launched our open data portal. This is self-serve data hub for searching, downloading, and resourcing data for all types of purposes. It's free to use. It's increasingly being relied upon as an authoritative data source. It's, it's getting quite a bit of use and greatly reduces staff time in responding to requests for data. It supports community initiatives and also innovation through its ability to leverage application programming interface. As well, we have our community performance dashboard that tracks and monitors programs around the O C P and economic development goals, including housing affordability, diversity, local economy and jobs, public space and connectivity, and also supports statutory data reporting around ministry environment, waste production and diversion. And coming soon, we'll have the addition of our Community Climate Action Plan Dashboard into the community dashboard as well. Another exciting opportunity is through T T P and creating new automated services such as our new business license dashboard and development showcase that leverages the tools and technologies to create these services, which require, once they're set up, not a lot of staff input to manage. So we've made some progress, but how are we doing in comparison to other communities? In twenty twenty, the district participated in the Open City Index. So this is a ranking from the previously, previous year in twenty nineteen. The district ranked twenty seventh out of fifty five local governments with with open data programs. And this ranking is weighted based on population and organizational size. So if you look at the overall rankings, you know, there's, there's much larger communities, you know, city of Edmonton, city of Toronto, that are, that are part of this survey. And then there's other ones that would be more comparable, such as New West, which is again larger than us, but they do try to weight the the values based on the size and population of the organization. So we really scored middle of the pack, which isn't necessarily a bad place to be. They've given us some suggestions for improvement in areas we can, we can improve in. They organize the ranking based on, based on three primary areas. Those being readiness, implementation, and impact. So as far as implementation, the suggestions for improvement are around making more data sets available and data sets that are non spatial, you know, G I S related data sets, things around budget, public safety, you know, culture. We're talking with recreation about getting some of the utility, the, the the usage statistics from our, from our facilities. So we ranked twenty ninth in that category out of, out of the fifty five organizations. Our highest score is in impact, where we actually came thirteenth out of the fifty five. Impact, some suggestions for improvement, more further staff engagement and promotion with local innovation centers and academic institutions, and provide more user focused workshops so people can understand how to use open data. And finally, in readiness, we were thirty fifth out of the fifty five. Some suggestions were development of the Open Data Committee. We have our, we have our group, open data group at the organization, at the district, but it's formalizing that group and potentially inviting external stakeholders as well to participate. Strengthening those internal resources and as well developing an open data master plan and policy. So we're really ready to take the next step on our, on our open data journey. And that's where the Open Data Charter comes in. We felt that, that it was important to adopt a set of foundational principles as we look, look towards developing an administrative policy and guidelines for staff. We conducted a thorough review with the help of Dr. Schmidt and her student, Mr. Miguel Del Pino, who unfortunately can't be with us today. Dr. Schmidt's on the call from Concordia. We found these, we found that the Open Data Charter was the best fit for Squamish. This international charter. And then we, we've actually added an additional principle to the six that are found within this charter. I'll highlight that in a moment. A little bit about the Open Data Charter, it's internationally recognized, as I said. It's been adopted by more than seventy, seventy five national and local governments. That includes the government, Canada, city of Toronto, Edmonton. The nice thing about the Open Data Principles is they're actionable and measurable, and it'll help guide the district's open data implementation. We felt that the vision and mission within the charter really align with our social, economic and environmental values while protecting the rights of people. I'd like to describe the principles and go through, go through them one by one. As I mentioned, the first six are principles directly from the Open Data Charter, and we've added a seventh. So the first principle, open by default. This represents a shift in how government operates and how it interacts with its citizens. Often, specific information is available by request only. Open by default turns this on its head through the presumption of publication for all. We justify data that's kept closed for security or data protection reasons. And for this to work, citizens must feel confident that open data will not compromise their right to protect. Principle three, accessible and usable, ensuring that data is machine readable and easy to find. Portals are one way of achieving this, but it's also important to think about the user experience of those accessing the data, including the file formats and information that is provided in. Data should be free of charge and under an open license. For example, we use the open government license through Open Data Portal, which has been adopted by a large number of B C municipalities, as well as the provincial government and the federal government as well. Principle four is comparable and interoperable. Data has a multiplier effect. The more quality data sets we have access to, the easier it is for them to talk to one another. The more potential value he can get from them. Using commonly agreed to standards will play a crucial role in making this happen. Principle five for improved governance and citizen engagement. Open data has the capacity to let citizens and others in the government have a better idea of what officials and politicians are doing. And this transparency can improve public services and help hold governments accountable. Principle six for inclusive development and innovation. Open data can help spur inclusive economic development. For example, greater, greater access to data can make farming more effective. It can be used to tackle climate change. We often think that open data is just about improving government, government performance, but entrepreneurs can leverage the data for innovation as well. And finally, principle seven, which I mentioned earlier, that we added this in addition to the International Open Data Charter principles. We wanted to highlight the principle of protected, ensuring that confidential and classified data and information are protected. This response to the need to emphasize the importance of keeping certain information confidential for the safety and security of citizens. And this principle comes as from the New Zealand government, who adopted this as one of their principles in twenty sixteen. So we're seeking council's endorsement of these principles as the foundation for administrative and guideline development. Our work plan for this year is, is to adopt those principles and develop an open data administrative policy. Create a framework for the implementation, which includes guidelines, strategy, and a roadmap. The implementation of the Open Data Action Plan, we'd like to submit that for consideration through the budget process and start to understand the scope and scale of what that plan will, will be. Identify the potential options that we might take in a phased implementation. We want to recommend something that's right size for the community and also consider that we will grow obviously in the future. And then we want to, we want to future proof the organization with this plan as well. In terms of our overall approach to the project, we're really focusing on strategic data as a priority. Obviously, there's a lot of data within the district. It would be a huge undertaking to inventory all the data sets that we have available. So we want to focus by, by being targeted and focused on that strategic data, we feel we can bring the most value. We want to be agile and responsive and adaptive as our data needs change. We saw this in twenty twenty with COVID. We really had to adapt our approach and that we had to adopt our approach to data as well. We want to surface data and its related costs, risks and opportunities. So there is an operational cost to managing the data. And there's also potential risks and there's potential opportunities. There is a well that we want to surface. One of our core values is managing data as a community asset as well. In the same way, we would think of our infrastructure assets, data, data is an asset to our organization. We're going to build our organization's data capacity and literacy and be collaborative and share our skills and knowledge and support our organizational culture. So we would like council, or we are recommending a motion for council that the District of Squamish receive the Open Data Policy Project and endorse the Open Data Guiding Principles as a foundation for the development of the Open Data Policy and procedures as presented in the March ninth, twenty twenty one staff report. Staff and Dr. Schmidt are here to answer any questions. So thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. My first question actually is with respect to principle number one. The organization must delimit what is kept restricted for security, data protection, et cetera. What do you mean by delimit? Not familiar with that word.
Let me go back to the principles. Yeah, I think that the, the intention there is, is to be targeted about what data is being presented. I'm being thoughtful about that.
In other words, keep it as narrow as possible.
I think, I think targeting the highest value.
Yeah. Council Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. I'm always curious. I thank you for the presentation and all the work that's been done. I think generally I'm supportive of the principles. My question is around balancing the open by default. And Mr. Griffin, you mentioned in one of the slides as well, ensuring that entrepreneurs can leverage the data for innovation. But are there, is, are we proposing to include limitations on the use of the data for commercial or for profit purposes by third parties? And how do we, if we want to do that, how do we ensure that that happens?
Through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Stoner. I would say that one of the foundational principles here is that we don't limit use. The only limit to use would be where it applies to personal privacy and protection and following our F O I guidelines. There is the F O I Act, the provincial statute, which identifies what, what constitutes private data. But beyond that, I think we, our intent would be to make data available for both commercial and non-commercial uses. And letting the data really be used for those purposes to generate economic value as well. We don't want to put limitations on the way that people use data potentially because it might limit the value for the data's potential use in the future.
I'll think about that for a little bit.
Council Anderson, Council Penkill.
Thank you. I have three brief questions. Personally, Mr. Griffin, I note that in the Open Data Working Group, you have three departments representative, but engineering slash environment is not one of them. And I was wondering if there's any consideration behind that, the type of data or installations, if you like, that engineering is involved with? Or is it simply just how the group came together? Is there some consideration regarding participation of the engineering department?
I can speak to that one. Sarah McJanet here. The, the Open Data Working Group is sort of a core working group, but we are absolutely engaging with engineering and environment, public works across the organization. And there are many, many data stewards and people that are working with data. This really surfaced when we started to put together the community dashboard, especially when, which has indicators and highlights data across the organization and all the different areas. So we're definitely working across the organization with many, many folks working in, in, in managing, collecting, analyzing and reporting on data. The, the working group is just sort of that core group to help support this project going forward.
Very good. Thank you. My next question is, I have before me a recent report from the Economic Development Department, which has a two-page bibliography. And a couple of questions arise for me in looking at it. There are two reports that I wonder whether are currently available in the Open Data Portal. And one of them is on Squamish Open Data Collection Plan. And the other is data analysis for sector recommendations prepared two years ago for the Economic Development Department. Are these reports available today through that open, open data portal? Or may I maybe perhaps follow up? It may be too specific a question. Or may I maybe perhaps follow up? It may be too specific a question, but I may let you know the reason why I'm asking is I got lost trying to find them.
Understand. I'll just state briefly, most of the data that's available through the open data portal right now is is spatial data, G I S related data. Those reports should be available through our website. I would defer to Kate on that. Maybe she can speak to their availability.
Thanks, Dan. Through you, the chair. Yes. So the the two that you're referring to are the product of data analysis. So they are reports as opposed to the open data portal, which is really just the raw data sets, which then can be analyzed. So we do have those available through our website through economic development.
Thank you. The other question that arises for me and while we have this mulligan is that and in particular relating to economic development. A number of these titles are regional in nature or scope or address S L R D projects. So my question is, and this is relating to your point that you've made, Mr. Griffin, about right sizing for the community. What about a regional perspective, regional collaboration in in this open data initiative? Is this relevant for S L R D liaison with Whistler? Are they up to the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Through the chair. I think there's wonderful opportunity just to work regionally and we do do that. We we are working. There's a community map of Canada, which collects data from open data portals all across Canada and and amalgamates the data into a single unified base map. That's one example of how how regions are working together to support each other in open data development. I think there's opportunity as well to surface some of the data that the district is involved in on on some of the regional planning. And and have those data sets available on the portal. There's there's certainly opportunity there and I wouldn't want to restrict the data necessarily to to our, you know, squammer centric data sets when when they have value that goes beyond our, you know, for decision making beyond our borders as well.
Thanks. And I see Ms. McJanet and Ms. Mulligan. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. One example of regional collaboration and interplay between local and regional data is, of course, the House on the Cut Some Marine Reference Guide project that's underway right now, where there's data that's sort of coming from the district. But that's being fed into the Marine Reference Guide as an example and has regional application and is a more of a a regional decision support tool as well. So there's new examples that are emerging on the regional front.
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you through the chair. I think one of the opportunities that we see with the potential of this governance and policy development is the opportunity to build into our planning, in particular around regional projects, the need for open machine readable data. And so when we are creating statements of work that is going to involve data collection that as a deliverable, we're actually getting these open these data sets that then can be put into an open data environment. So I think this is a great opportunity in terms of our future planning around projects and initiatives. And so I just wanted to kind of add that on that. That this will provide more of an organized process for staff in terms of a set of considerations when developing that statement of work.
Thank you. Any follow up, Counselor Anderson? Counselor Pen Gil.
Yes, thank you. And I got really excited when I saw this on the agenda, work with databases and data all day, every day. And so that topic is dear to my heart, frequent user of the B C government open data site as well, specifically. The one piece when I read through the principles that I'm not sure is called out clearly enough is disaggregated demographic data collection. And, you know, that's come up in conversations a lot, especially in the last year. I know that Ontario is a bit ahead of B C. But the B C Office of the Human Rights Commissioner has a report to disaggregated demographic data collection in B C, the grandmother perspective, which has, I think, a lot of really important concepts to consider in terms of open data. And, you know, in my mind, that's something that could maybe be somehow identified or or covered a little more explicitly in item two, principle two or six. So timely and comprehensive as a piece of a piece of what is comprehensive or inclusive in terms of equitable. And I just think in terms of what we do as municipality and some of what we're talking about with the idea project and so on. This is a really important area. And I think, you know, there's going to be some really critical policy around this piece too, which in my perspective, fits really nicely with the rest of the future open data policy work. And so for me, some way to identify that a little more clearly is is important.
Thank you, Counselor Pettingill. Maybe I'll ask Dr. Schmidt, do you have some comments on inclusivity and equitable data?
Right. So the the thing that strikes me if we're thinking about, thank you all. I've really enjoyed the entire council meeting. I had lots of thoughts that I held back on the car zones. Anyway, um, so it's really been fun for me because I do a sort of policy and governance. So this has been really nice. Um, so what comes to mind, we're thinking about disaggregating data sets demographically is privacy, right? For a relatively small sized city. I worry about the more we disaggregate the data, the more identifiable certain things about individuals might become. So I I think maybe if you're talking about like a provincial level, that might be something different than we're talking at a municipal scale. I have to look into that more. I'm not sure. But while I'm talking, I also want you to know I'm writing lots of notes. And Councilwoman Stoner, I have written down a note and a research question related to your question. So it's certainly something I'm thinking about. I don't. I don't have a bigger answer for you right now, Councilman Pen Gil, but I'll think about it more.
That's better.
Yeah, and justify I may. My suggestion wasn't that we need to start collecting disaggregated demographic data tomorrow. But I think in as part of our principles and the things we are considering and how we relate to that. For me, that's a critical piece that should be somehow covered in our principles a little, maybe not absolutely explicitly, but a little more directly than is covered now because I think you could follow these principles and not give any thought to that as it's written. And so I think we need to go a little bit further in my mind.
And and I think to your point, I think it's also about maintaining the relationships between different data sets, right? Often we lose the sort of any sort of covariance structure. And that's to me also really important. But if you maintain a covariance structure, then I think you start to run into privacy issues as well. So I think there's a lot of things we have to think about at the same time. So I agree with you. I think for it to be valuable, we should be keeping our eye on those things. But then so it doesn't cause harm, we also need to keep our eye on the other. So I think it's a balance and we just we need to have our eyes open about all of that going forward.
You know, I think staff have to understand that it's just your bad luck that you chose a day to present where the meeting is being shared by the lowest common denominator. So I wonder if somebody could explain to me what disaggregated data is. And for maybe a few people in the public that also might not know. Go ahead, Counselor Pen Gil.
Well, it it's basically the idea that you understand not on a personally identifying level. And I guess that's part of the the tension that that is sort of being looked at by a lot of people here. But that you understand, you know, for different racial groups, different gender groups, how, you know, different distributions of income, services. And so, you know, as you roll things out across your community, are the impacts equitable? And are there differences along gender, different demographic based dimensions or not?
Thank you. Any further comment, counsel? There is a staff recommendation. Your pardon? I'm sorry, didn't hear. Oh, did I miss some speakers? I didn't have a note of any other speakers. Yeah, right in front of you.
My hands up and Counselor French's hand is up.
Oh, and for some reason you're not on my screen. Hey, Mayor, Mayor Elliott, followed by Counselor French.
And I think that you're the perfect chair for this conversation, Counselor Reese, because then you'll make sure that the general public understands what we're talking about. I, one, I'm totally impressed with our score, actually, in in being compared to other communities, which is great, especially on the impact piece. And I think you answered my question. One of my questions was about how do we build literacy in our community to understand how to use these tools? And I agree with Counselor Anderson, you can get in there and get lost very quickly. But how do we? You know, I think that's part of this. You talked about it, Mr. Griffin, about educating the public, that sort of thing. But is that part of sort of when we think about implementing how we build sort of open data literacy in the community for not-for-profit groups, students, just general public?
Thank you very much. Yeah. I think that's really an important point as well is is during that outreach. And that will certainly be something that we focus on with the implementation. I do want to point out that this specific project that we're working right now on right now is development of a policy and guidelines. Primarily internally focused administrative policy. So it's guiding our district staff in the way that they would use or implement open data. But certainly point taken. I think it is important to to consider that that public use as well.
And is it possible to get feedback from people who are accessing our database on what they're using it for? I mean, obviously, we're trying to give it freely and not limit that. But also then, how do you know the, how do you measure the impact, I guess, was the question I had, given there's a score for impact? Like, how are they measuring that? How do they know what people are using it for and the change they're making with it or the studies they're doing?
Again, that's a that's a great question, Mayor, Mayor Elliott. I think, you know, right now we can look at analytics and identify, you know, how many users we're getting and where they're where they're located and and those types of analytics. I think we could develop some surveys that we might make available through this through our different platforms where people could voluntarily provide information. I know personally, my guess and my assumption is that most of the data is being used by professionals, you know, engineering firms, architects, developers. They're looking for data to support their their applications and their developments and their programs and their business. You know, but there's also community groups. Sorka, pulling trails data, you know, I think environmental, the estuary work that's happening are utilizing the data for for that for their purposes. And I'm sure on, you know, on the economic development side, there's there's things that I'm missing as well. I know, you know, one of the one of the apps that uses our data is Recollect that tells you how to, you know, when your garbage is being collected on what day. They they pull the data, the addressing data from our from our open data site as well as the garbage collection polygons. So, you know, there's there's all kinds of uses and I am probably missing a ton of them here. But, you know, it is a challenge trying to understand how and and who's using the data if you want to keep it anonymous, something to give some thought to.
And I think my only other comment is to build on Counselor Pettingill's comments around our idea project, which is around inclusion, diversity, equity and access. And how this becomes a tool to to help support that and also around the climate emergency. And so I wonder if our principles can capture those two really important things in terms of of the the direction that society is taking and and the things that are are front of mind for a lot of people. And are there data sets that can help in in those two aspects of of community resilience and and community building? So be interesting to see if we can weave those into the principles. Otherwise, I think this is something that I look forward to learning more about. And and how we can use it internally, but also how we can have our community using it and more broadly. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. And on the point of the data that we're making available, potentially being used for commercial purposes. I'm looking at that through a slightly different lens than than the one that I think Counselor Stoner was leaning towards earlier. So if there are entrepreneurs and creative thinkers out there who can take data that we're making available and find a way to generate revenue for themselves, let's see that as a success. And an example of this is data journalism. There are reporters out there who are taking massive amounts of data that really don't mean anything to anybody in their huge forms. Mining it, investigating it and turning it into really interesting news. So I just share that. And then the additional seventh item that has been put into the mix that protected. I I find that to be really important. Our residents need to feel comfortable that we're keeping their personal information private. And these days of frequent data breaches involving credit card company databases, install loyalty cards and breaches and leaks of any and all other kind at the personal level. It's super important for our citizens to feel like we are treating their personal information appropriately. And making sure that it doesn't get into their own heads. It's like great work, staff. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a recommendation to endorse these principles, but I'm wondering maybe staff could comment. There's been a couple of suggestions made today, how those might be incorporated into the principles. If we just endorsed it today, would we lose those or should we endorse that with consideration of those points? To do the latter. Counselor Stoner.
On my point around commercialization of data by third parties, I was very excited to hear that Ms. Schmidt had had made a mention of that in her notes. And I'm happy for that just to be considered through this process and not necessarily change the principles to address it at this point. I just think it's something that, especially as we get more clarity around what data sets are going to be included there. I think it's worth some considerations and thought around the potential impacts of commercialization of that data by third parties. You are making public public data available for a commercial basis. So I think there's a question there. But I don't need to necessarily amend the principles at this point.
Okay. Counselor Pen Gil and Mayor had points. Mayor consideration perhaps. So we just leave it, endorse the principles stated in the report with consideration of the disintegration program. As well as the the idea, I D E A, principles. And leave it at that. And we'll leave it to staff to just see if you can sort of slightly redraft them. And also while we're talking about that is maybe just to clarify principle number one. And sort of make it clear what we're trying to do. I think narrow the scope is what we're trying to do. And I can understand the principle and I agree with that, but I'm not sure it's very clear to the public. So with that in mind, is there somebody that's prepared to make a motion along the lines of the staff recommendation? Considering the principles of idea, I D E A, and disintegration of data? And was there anything else I'd missed there?
Disaggregation and climate.
Disintegration. Small difference.
And climate, I would love to see on there too.
Counselor Herbert?
There is moving that I was seconding it. She wasn't moving it out a little bit.
Is the mayor moving it?
Sure, I'll move that.
Seconded by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Herbert. Any further comment? Counselor Pen Gil.
Yeah, once again, thanks staff for this. I do find this topic exciting. And just for clarity, I, I don't need an explicit personally mention of idea. I think that's part of what disaggregated data serves. But for me, it's somehow getting to the idea. And again, for me, it was in principle two and six, I think. Just a little more room or direction on including that, that piece of disaggregated data in, in our policy going forward is what I'm looking for. But with that clarification, happy to support this.
With the comment, I'll call a question. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Griffin. We will now recess. I want to give you an hour for lunch. So we will come back on this link at 1:15. Welcome back. I'll call this meeting back to order after lunch break. And the next item on the agenda is item four, sub three, Lower Mainland LGA Local Government Association. All the resolutions and nominations and just for general discussion. And so first of all, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Stoner and then Mary Elliott for comments as members of the Board of LGA. And take it away, Counselor Stoner. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. So folks will remember last year, the Lower Mainland Local Government Association Annual Conference was canceled due to the pandemic. And then the U B C M meeting in October was virtual. And there was a bit of a shift in the resolutions sessions last year where obviously, since there was no annual meeting with the Lower Mainland Local Government Association, all the resolutions that were submitted were passed on directly to U B C M. This year, we are able to hold a conference which we're very excited about. It will be virtual, given the circumstances that we're still under. And so the executive of the Lower Mainland LGA has requested that all member municipalities be a bit judicious in the way that we bring resolutions forward, just because there will be limited time for debate on the resolutions, given the online nature of the conference this year. And that really is the debate portion is really, is very important typically to the resolution process. So we want to ensure that our resolutions are timely in nature, are applicable both to all member municipalities within the Lower Mainland Local Government Association, as well as ideally more broadly applicable to all municipalities within the province. So just wanted to set that context so that council, we sometimes have a very long list of resolutions to bring forward as we consider what we might want to bring forward this year, just to be a little bit judicious in our conversation today. This is the first of two conversations, I believe. Resolutions are not due until March 24th. So we'll have a chance to do one more committee of the whole discussion on finalizing resolutions. So just that piece of context as well. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Mary Elliott, did you have comments?
Um, I just wanted to bring people's attention to the fact that Vanessa Jenkins sent an email this morning as an additional attachment to this conversation so that you can see how the board dealt with our resolutions last year. So none of them were really, maybe one of them, no, none of them were debated on the floor at U B C M. And some of them were endorsed and others not. But my preference is certainly to be judicious this time around, given the limitations of the virtual resolution session, although who knows where we'll be at in September, maybe U B C M will provide for some limited attendance. I'm not sure. So anyway, I'm, the only one that is on my mind is around childcare. And so we have not been able to hit the, the provincial government guidelines of $40,000 per space to construct childcare. Our application was rejected for being too high. Pemberton's having the same issue. And I've heard that there are other communities struggling with this as well. So in communities where we have zero, close to zero percent vacancy for commercial space and where we don't have a lot of land, but we're still, we were trying to put this on public land anyway. Our, our next childcare center and and where our cost of building is just very high because of the growth that's happening here. There is an argument to be made to Minister Chen that in extenuating circumstances, her, the criteria for approving funding for new childcare spaces is a little bit too constraining. And so I'm happy to either put that through consideration at this council or potentially doing it through the regional district. Because this will be an issue for all of us in the quarter. But that would be the only one that's sort of provincially focused. I know lots of communities are struggling with this and would appeal, have the most appeal, I think, based on what Counselor Stoner said.
Counsel, this is more of a general discussion at this point. Are there any comments or questions? Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I noted in the memo we received from Vanessa Jenkins this morning that the Natural Resource Roads Resolution isn't included in that list. It was endorsed at the U B C M convention, just to, just to footnote that. That's it for now.
Mary Elliott, go ahead.
Through the chair, Counselor Anderson, these all came in separately. Each resolution came in a separate envelope. And so possibly we haven't received them all yet. Or possibly it was included in a block that was endorsed as a whole. I'm not sure. But I'll keep my eye out for it. But you're right, that one was endorsed.
Very good.
Counselor Herbert.
Thank you. I like the direction, the, the childcare piece, especially around the existing, existing programs and cost of building just outright is, is a factor. But also, I think that a key piece is the, is the sort of difficulty here is to get to the flood hazard level like those sort of extra circumstances, not just that it's an expensive place to build anything, but the, some consideration for that, for that, whether it's hazard, however, the word of hazard mitigation or, or this excessive flood level, or not excessive, but extensive flood level that's required, or just some other way to help with this story in an existing program, I think is great. And then of course, any, this is a separate, I'm assuming it's a separate topic, but just expanded low cost data, general access too. But maybe working on an existing program is overhang or the way to, the way to proceed or maybe both of those, both of those things. But I see those both as being very important.
Anything else? Counselor Penney.
Yeah, just a comment. I didn't have, oh, I'm supportive of the childcare, moving something in that direction. We did, I just saw a letter asking us to pull back one of our resolutions from last year related to PACE because another one was already covering it. I would like to, before we do anything on that, just do a little bit more investigation. Personally, I believe the other resolution that's being referred to was not adopted or a part of a block of resolutions, resolutions not to adopt. So I'm not sure where that places that. But in addition to that, Help Cities Lead is already pursuing five actions. One of those is PACE already. And three of those things, including PACE, are already in the ministerial letters. So, you know, whether or not we push this through U B C M may, may not make sense. And I would like, it's on my to-do list to have a conversation with the mayor about bringing forward the Help Cities Lead thing, which may provide an alternative avenue to some of the items that we had from last year. And maybe we can remove some of that burden. So I'm looking to have some of those conversations over the next week with the mayor and Climate Caucus and Help Cities Lead to maybe find the most expeditious way to bring forward all of these things. A number of communities have supported the Help Cities Lead resolutions. I know we haven't seen them as a group. But again, that may remove some of the load from some of the things that we put forward last year. Because there's a lot of overlap there. And again, the province is already pursuing some of these things in their ministerial letters.
Anything further, Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I've been thinking about two themes for resolutions. They're both federal. And I haven't investigated them at length, either one of them. But I thought I'd just put them forward here in case we want to continue a conversation on either. By the way, on the Natural Resource Roads Resolution, there's more work to be done. The objective of that resolutions is to encourage the government to take first steps towards implementing a 2010 Joint U B C M Province Report on Natural Resource Roads. But I think that when we get back to attending conventions and face to face, there'll be better opportunity to liaise with other groups on that. The two federal topics I had here is railway crossings, funding, better funding for upgrades and dredging. And the dredging really involves both our small boat harbor, the Maquon Blaine Channel, and also Squamish Tunnels, as we know, is facing challenges on this. This is an ancient topic for lobbying the feds. But I think that from Squamish, we can add something from the West Coast. We have Nanaimo certainly interested and the phrase, and the Lower Mainland communities as well. I'll note that when the dredging topic was taken by the Squamish Chamber to the B C Chamber forum about four years ago, we had substantial pushback from the Surrey Board of Trade because they don't want anybody interfering in the budget allocation that they have. So there's a lot of competition over too scarce resources for harbor maintenance. So those two themes I just put out there as to whether they may be appropriate for this as federal topics and whether we might do more work on them from Squamish.
Thank you. But you're right, not quite the subject of this discussion, but something we can keep in mind going forward. If there is nothing else, then we'll move on to other things. As Counselor Stoner noted, there is a committee of the whole, two weeks from now. The material that's attached to our agenda indicates the last day for submission is Friday, March 26th. So my suggestion would be if anybody does have a suggested resolution, then liaise with Counselor Stoner and/or the mayor for drafting it and be prepared to bring a draft to that next meeting. Counselor Stoner, did you have a further comment?
I was just going to correct myself on the date with the 26th. I had originally said the 24th. So all good. Thank you. That also gives us a chance to, if we want to bring the childcare resolution to the S L R D Board, that can be done before that deadline as well.
Okay. Anything further on this? Well, then we'll move on. The last topic on the agenda is the Squamish Arts Council Request for Letter of Support. And this is an application they intend to make to Canada Healthy Communities Initiative Project. If they are successful with their application, they will be using some of the stories collected from their Your Stories, Our Community project to inform public art pieces in various Squamish neighborhoods that tell the stories of the community and stand as a testament to resilience, as well as giving space to witness personal challenges in times for our community members. And they are looking for a letter of support. So I'm looking for a resolution that the mayor be directed to provide a letter of support on behalf of this. To move her up. Move Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Discussion. Any opposed to that motion? Thank you. Motion carries. And now I am looking for a motion to close. Moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herbert, or sorry, any opposed? Motion carries. We are now enclosed. And so I anticipate coming back on the closed link. We have to round up staff and so forth. So I'm saying 1:45, quarter to two on the closing.